Test, test.
Okay, we'll call the order of the city council work session for Monday, January 27th, 2025. Please rise for the question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, roll call.
Mark Bittner.
Here.
Shannon Derby, here. Bill Leclair.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Chivielonis.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
Darrell Leclair.
Here.
Okay, uh, since we do have two members that are remote tonight, we will have a three dot five or a three eight, whatever you want to call it, uh, consideration of any council members' requests to participate in this meeting from a remote location. Uh, like I said, we have Bill and Mark, so we'll keep our motion up at the time. Thank you, Shannon. Second by Bonnie, thank you. Uh, any council discussion? Seeing none, this is your roll call, Val.
Shannon Derby, aye. Bill Leclair.
He doesn't get both.
Oh, Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Chivielonis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Darrell Leclair.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed, thank you, and welcome officially Mark and Bill onto number four discussion items. Discuss council interest in attending the Manitowoc County Chamber for Grant Awards of Distinction on Thursday, November 13th, 2025.
Yes, uh, this is coming right up, so we added it to tonight's work session agenda. You've got copies of the invitation that Val distributed to each of you. Uh, this will mean the need to reschedule a personal finance committee meeting we had planned for that evening. Um, Bonnie and I have discussed that and I, I've just got to, I've just reached out to Adam this evening, got to reach out to Mark, so we will work on getting that rescheduled. Um, that is a meeting where either virtually or in person, they are to be here to talk about our 2025 capital financing, because they do want us to come to the council at the second meeting in February with the parameters resolution for borrowing. So, that, that aside, typically we've had at least a few council members each year attend the chamber awards program, wondered if, uh, if we could have a show of hands, at least of folks that wish to have reservations made for that evening. Bonnie's planning on attending, I know, and, um, I will. Any, anyone else from council wishing to attend?
Yeah, I can do it.
Scott, it wasn't a deadline on the RSVPs, but if you could, if you aren't in a position tonight, but decide later on this week that you can't attend, I'd encourage you to get in touch with Val by Friday and look at those reservations. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, number five action items. Under A, we have professional services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services for grant-funded projects, creating the resilient waterfront park for addressing long-term planning for shoreline resilience and enhanced public access use for the public waterfront from the harbor south and pass the city loans to the vicinity of the chief of commerce.
We've updated the council a couple times on this, at least during the past year, and as I stated in my memo, the city's been working for over two years to assemble funding uh, for this planning initiative. Uh, it's basically being funded from three pots of money. A save our Great Lakes grant from the, uh, excuse me, sustain our Great Lakes grant, SOGOL grant from National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, a grant from the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, that's also through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, their coastal resilience fund, and the fund for Lake Michigan, which is a Wisconsin-based entity. They're, my understanding, they're funded largely through, uh, some settlements with notably we energies over some environmental impact issues with power plants, and they've, they've awarded funding to the city in the past. So, total project, which is proposed as a contract with Stan Tech Consulting, is $405,354. That to be funded entirely from those three grant funding sources. Uh, I have checked, I can tell you, at this point, the fund for Lake Michigan, I'm on the second page of my memo, which is page four of the packet, the fund from Lake Michigan funds are in hand here at the city. I've checked with the, uh, Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, because my understanding is the, uh, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation dollars, uh, were, uh, Inflation Reduction Act dollars from the federal government. So, had a question in light of some of the executive orders announced by, uh, the, the new administration last week. Uh, the person in charge of this project for the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative indicates that, uh, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation have all of the grant funds in their account, and they don't foresee any issues, uh, because they, they are the grantee or were a sub-grantee. Uh, I have an inquiry out to the sustain our Great Lakes grant program, but that is likewise, uh, with federal funds that have been awarded to the National Wildlife, or sorry, Fish and Wildlife Federation. I always mix that up, foundation, there isn't federation, foundation, which is a five-on-one C3, uh, environmental organization. So, want, want to make sure that our, our funding isn't impacted by executive orders, either recent or upcoming, because there's an awful lot of moving parts right now, but all feedback is that, uh, that our funds, two out of three, and I'm waiting on confirmation from the third. Uh, this is a big contract. I would note that, um, the city's worked with Stan Tech intermittently over the years. They've done land delineations for us at Sandy Bay. They've worked with the city in Woodland Dunes for, um, pollinator plantings along Memorial Drive, stream restoration for Woodland Dunes Nature Center. They were working with the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence Cities Initiative coming into this project, and I understand we're selected through an RFP process. That organization did, so at this point, we really, we want to move forward with them. The Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Seaway Cities Initiative, um, through this particular program, they're funding, funded two Wisconsin communities, two rivers in, I forget, it was Kenosha or Racine, and then two communities on the Michigan side of Lake Michigan, Buchanan and Penn Water, and just all four projects are moving ahead. Uh, there's a fairly detailed list of task orders associated with this. Matt, our city engineer, and Mike Mathis, our cars and rec director, have spent some time with Stan Tech as far as hammering out the schedule, the work schedule, the work items to be carried out, and much of this study, while it covers the whole area from the south pier to the extent of the city's property ownership along Memorial Drive, which is actually in the city manager while by the chamber, a major focus is the area from the south pier to the south end of the lighthouse. And, and that's to pick up on a concept that was in the 2013 Harbor Master Plan for, um, making improved use of and widening the public beach there, and also developing a model to help address some of the sand transport there, which, that's going to mean some coordination with the Corps of Engineers, doesn't mean there'll be core money right now, but to try to address the sand transport north through there, uh, a lot of which we think ends up right in front of the pier, every, or between the piers. So, that's the focus, and this is the contract that will allow that work to go forward. Lot more detail in the materials for the agenda.
Any questions for Greg? Otherwise, we're looking for motion to authorize city manager to execute the contract.
Scott, I have a couple of questions I could ask.
Yeah, okay.
This is, first of all, it's positive, a lot of money, it's not coming from, uh, local tax base, uh, to improve our shoreline. Greg, um, in this document, there was discussion of, uh, several public awareness sessions. Are we going to, uh, use Woodland Dunes? I understand they're not going to do that. How are we going to communicate to the public as we proceed and resolve to this thing moving forward?
My understanding is Stan Tech can communicate with the city and will have to handle that outreach. I think Woodland Dunes would certainly be invited to those sessions, but they didn't feel this was the right time for them to be taking on that responsibility. There's some dollars in the contract to offset costs there.
Hey Greg, can you explain a little bit about this FUP Act 3C and the alternatives we're looking at there?
Hold on.
That's on page, uh, I believe five, if I can.
Twenty-five. Did you say three C, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. Three C, I'm on page eighteen, at least as far as how it's described. This would be some modeling of, um, how currents and wave action impact that area. They would, I'm, I'm just reading it here, look at offshore wave conditions, and that is, uh, some of it will draw on information from the Corps of Engineers study that was done a few years ago jointly funded by the city, looking at wave and current information for our harbor, and then, uh, they'll be doing some wave modeling, both wave modeling and trying to model the sediment transport to evaluate the best approach for addressing shoreline stabilization and controlling sediments, uh, in that area, including, as I note, they're trying to provide some background for engineering on the size of any armor stone that would be placed either for detached breakwaters, which you're showing off the shoreline in that concept plan that was in your packets from the Harbor Master Plan, or for the alternative of extending the south breakwater, which, again, is one of the possibilities in the future with the Corps of Engineers. Matt, do you have any other recommendations? If I'm recalling right, you and...
We would select, and Greg, we'd select the most suitable alternative.
Right, and the, yeah, and that's, right, that's not to say that alternative, there's no funding at this point for that alternative, but it could be used to advocate for that alternative with the Corps or other agencies.
Then it would be coming up to secure funding in some fashion.
Right, this is not implementation funding, except for a little bit of, you know, plantings that are addressed. It's, it's planning and engineering work. I guess I see it as, this could lay the foundation for the city's approach over the next five to fifteen years for pursuing funding in this area. Understand?
I agree with the project.
And I was just going to add, no, nobody's saying why we think the lake is going up and down. I'm not talking about climate change or simply God's will or whatever. So, we just, I would add, we just know for a fact, looking at the past few years, we've seen in the last twenty years, a record low and flirting with record highs just a few years ago. So, um, this is really meant, uh, as well as this ongoing problem we've got at the harbor entrance to address the resiliency of the shoreline, because the city now owns, except for the portions owned by Seagull Marina, about two hundred feet south of the south breakwater, and what's in front of the lighthouse inn. The city, sometimes it's just a sliver, sometimes it's pretty wide, like at the waysides, but the city owns most of the rest of the Lake Michigan frontage, all the way down to the Chamber of Commerce.
Any other questions, Mark?
No, that, that answered my question.
Okay, go ahead, Bonnie.
Well, I was wondering, the highlighted part on, um, page six.
Okay.
Why, I wasn't quite sure what that.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I couldn't get that highlighting out of there. Uh, the highlighting on page six and seven of your packet, those were areas where I had contacted Stan Tech about wanting to see changes in their original contract language, and our city attorney could chime in on this as well, because, um, our Weston Dunn did take a look at this contract, and the, the earlier version had, um, when requested by Stan Tech, for example, client shall engage specialist consultants. We had a problem with that, saying, no, we, you asked us, and if we agree that those specialists are needed, and show us, we can pay for them in the budget, within the budget, fine. So, that, that was an area we had focused on for language change, and similarly over on page seven, where you see some highlighted language under point, I guess it's not a point number, under termination. Likewise, there was a termination without cause provision, uh, that benefited Stan Tech, but it didn't mention the city or the client. And actually, it was, I believe, a thirty-day out clause originally, so, uh, I had sent a markup to Stan Tech suggesting we, A, not suggesting, but stating that the city expected to have likewise the right to terminate without cause, and shortening that to as, as short as seven days' notice. Uh, and you, you might note, if you read on, um, on termination, the client will pay for services performed to the date of notice of termination. Again, we don't enter into contracts figured we're going to terminate them, but want to have appropriate language on. So, that, and the only changes we had, uh, really were on pages, the first two pages of the contract. That's why that highlighting is there. And does that, I'm, I'm trying to remember, Andrew, it was you or Sean that had done, was primary on the review, but those were a couple areas we were not too fond of in the Stan Tech.
Yeah, that was me, and those were definitely, those are the two points that I said, you know, if we can get those changed, get those changed. Um, there, yeah, and so, I, I honestly was a little surprised that Stan Tech did, so it's a good thing through the city.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we look for an option.
So, move.
I'm assuming motion to authorize city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city, as we stated. Okay, uh, looking for a second. Thank you, Shannon. Any council discussion?
No, I don't know.
Oh, I'll involve the...
Okay, I'm Mark. Just another Mark. Bonnie has the floor.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Bon, Bonnie has the floor. Uh, the chair will be, we'll be here just a minute.
Right, so, um, whenever, things like green, what is green infrastructure? And I get, I get a little nervous of that, and non-pollutant runoff, I mean, if they determine it's non-pollutant, is it going to be a pollutant five years later?
Matt, you want to, or to, to us, if you would?
Green infrastructure is going to be, uh, basically plants, uh, can be looked at as stormwater detention ponds, so, uh, conversely, it's not working more. So, we're trying to do something in a green, sustainable way. So, uh, bioswales, uh, we've up in Sandy Bay Islands, we're using biofilters, so it's going to be, uh, having the water go through vegetation, slow down, allowing those pollutants of concern to sub up. Primarily, the pollutants of concern around here are going to be sediment and phosphorus. Um, so, in the future, we could be looking at nitrites, we could be looking at chlorides, uh, of that nature, but right now, it is the phosphorus and the, um, sediment.
So, I understand this, we're not mandated to spend money on those solutions, but I'm just speaking from dealing with Memorial Drive and being a, a, one of the gardeners along the trail. That, that, for the most part, the drive sheet drains, and a, a good half of it and the waysides head toward the lake with some pretty good flows at times. It's only been discussion, but there's been discussion at EAB about some possible demonstration projects out there, bioswales or rain gardens, uh, probably not as steep, but picture if, if you use bank first locally, uh, the drive-through lane, the outermost lane, there's, there's a, a, basically a rain guard there. That is a, a runoff management solution. So, yep.
Yeah, my, okay.
There's also some, um, need of vegetation seeding in here that will help reduce the sand loss across Memorial Drive and stuff. That's in there too.
Yeah, when we first put the application together, we had a lot more of a sand situation, especially just south of the lighthouse inn. It's amazing what Mother Nature does, given a little bit of time. That area has, in a lot of ways, reestablished itself, but we're also headed into what looks like another downs, who knows, but with the rain, the lack of rainfall, certainly based on our rivers around here, we may be headed into another down cycle, and when you get, when the water goes down, the wind-blown sand gets to be a lot more of a problem. You're right, there is implementation, green, if you will, implementation money there for, uh, plugs of beach grass and, uh, for up to two acres of pollinator gardens, uh, along the Mariners Trail corridor.
Mark, you had a question?
Given the fact that we're now part of no bank shore in the shoreline, um, how engaged and they seem to be overall supportive of this?
how engaged and they seem to be overall supportive of this concept? Anything about NOAA, you can elaborate on, Greg?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I'm sorry, we have not directly linked NOAA to this, either to this funding application or its implementation. I know they, there are probably some educational opportunities, and you know, we've had discussions with NOAA about their implementation plan, which relates more to public education and public access facilities. That's where we've had dialogue, and council has authorized some design work to date on the possibility of a visitor facility at the High Lift. Just design money so far. But, no, I'm sorry, this, while there may be a link there, we have not had that dialogue. Point well taken, but.
Anyone else?
By the way, not on the agenda tonight, but I mentioned some of the executive orders. We're likewise asking actively, as are a lot of communities, about, and I'm not being critical or political, but, you know, we just, we're just getting a new newsletter out to go to the next, the next one in the utility bills that talks about lead lather, let, getting the lead on what we're planning. There's another area where it's bipartisan infrastructure law monies and some, I'm sorry, Inflation Reduction Act monies. And it appears the president's executive order, from what we read, was intended to be more targeted at some of the green energy initiatives, so-called. But that's gonna be an ongoing topic until there's absolute clarity on some of those. So, we've gotten some reassurance on this, but we're watching those things closely, because we're getting ready to get out contracts very shortly that are assuming, and for the water stuff, we'll probably be relying mostly on what the DNR can tell us, because they're the recipient of federal funding. So, I didn't mean to go too broad there, but those things are costing some questions.
Okay, anything else? Yes, Adam.
As far as the green infrastructure stuff goes, is that gonna be a cost that's gonna come to us down the road as far as maintaining it?
Well, this, other than, again, those, the dune grass and a couple acres of pollinator areas, there's, my understanding of it, there's no implementation of the green infrastructure in here. It's, it's designs, it's plans. It'd be ready to go if we're looking at more mandates that require the city to do it, but I don't see a gun to our heads or a mandate-
I just didn't know if that would open up a can of worms in the future. And then, given the fact that Memorial Drive is not the city's responsibility, or we've done the salt on it, does the county share that responsibility for the runoff that goes into Lake?
That's a real big question. Yeah, and actually, the state of Wisconsin, they just pay the county for maintenance services on the drive. I don't know the final answer to that. They should.
I think we could enter into a memorandum of understanding and credit for that portion of the drive on stormwater detention. That has been discussed.
And I, as I sit here, I know the city's, city-owned parcels we pay on, we, we as a city don't pay a stormwater fee on our roadway system, though. So obviously, the state doesn't, we, they wouldn't, they wouldn't anyway. But, yeah, that's, that remains to be seen, you know, in the future. Could, who knows, in the future, could the state take a more active role in managing the runoff they create? And then, we could say, hey, as a city, we have a plan. Just don't know.
Okay, anything else? Okay, seeing nothing else, we will do a roll call vote.
No.
Bill Leclair.
If you're there, Bill, you're at the-
Bill, you're first up on the roll call.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shinonis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Hosky.
Aye.
Darla Leclair, aye. Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Shannon Durby.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, to be, funding agreement with Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative providing for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in funding assist in creating this resilient water front apartment project.
Yeah, this, this is a proposed letter of agreement related to the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative funding. They note the various funding sources of which they're part. And going back to the various tasks, the city's initiative funding is directed solely to task three, which is what we were talking about earlier, that modeling specific to the area immediately south of the, of the pier. That, gosh, I think about three years ago, Elizabeth Runge and I met with representatives of the Cities Alliance to talk about this competitive program. They had to select two Wisconsin cities, two Michigan cities. And we put forward that particular item from the 2013 Harbor Master Plan, is something we appreciate some funding support on. There you do say that they're, they're directing their hundred and thirty-five thousand toward that task. The balance being picked up by the Stay in Our Great Lakes and Fund for Lake Michigan grants with dollar amounts that are cited in the third paragraph here. So, they have to do everything in compliance with their funding agreement with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. This anticipates, as the city is invoiced for task three, that once the city approves invoices, we would in turn invoice the city's initiative for seventy percent of the task three charges, the other thirty percent would go to the other two grant programs. And I don't recall, or I don't know, Andrew, you and I just discussed this letter this afternoon. If you've had a chance to peruse this at all, if not, I'd recommend approval contingent upon the attorney's final review. This certainly is, as we as staff have discussed it with the city's initiative.
Yes, I would agree that it's perfectly acceptable.
And I'm sorry, what was that? I didn't catch it.
It is, it, it's good, it looks like it's good to get a little, from my perspective, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so that, that's our recommendation on this one. And these folks indicate they, that the funds from their funding entity, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, are available, confirmed available.
Okay, so, looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
I'll make that motion.
We got done making the motion, we just need a second.
I'll take the motion.
We'll go with Mark, Mark first.
You guys are, you're livelier on the phone than you are here, what's this? That's good stuff.
Any council discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
How long before we get this money?
Well, only one of these is money in hand, which is the, I'm sorry, the fund for Lake Michigan is sixty-six thousand. The other two, as I understand, both of them would be on a reimbursement basis. So, we spend, we get reimbursed. I can't give you an exact timeframe, but we, we might, we'll have to flow some of those expenses.
So you don't have a schedule of payment or anything?
Well, there is, there is a work schedule, which I touched bases with StanTech on, that was on that last agenda. It's fairly ambitious, they're looking at getting most, most all of the work done during the first two quarters of this year, so.
And what if they go over budget?
They can't go over budget without the city's authorization. So, if they do, we'll thank them for having provided more services. I don't see that happening.
Okay.
Anything else? Just in case, Mark, hearing nothing else, let's do another roll call vote.
Bill. Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shinonis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Hosky.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Shannon Durby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you all for that. Uh, to C, discussion of possible changes to city ordinances and policies pertaining to short-term rentals.
As I explained in a brief cover memo to this, my intent tonight is that, led by, in a discussion led by Attorney Adams, we identify some of the issues identified with our current city ordinance on short-term rentals. Also, perhaps how it interrelates with our zoning code. Identify some possible changes. Get feedback from the council on what, if any, changes you have an interest in pursuing. I don't see us coming out of here tonight with, obviously, the council having acted on those changes. If it touches the zoning code, it's going to need to go to Plan Commission for its advisory input. Most anything else is probably gonna need some more staff work. But I think it was a consensus at a work session, gosh, was it last summer or last fall, that we would come back with some, staff identifying some areas that might, where changes might take place. I know council has received, I think, seven communications through contact council or emails that all, that each of you have received. I have forwarded those to city department heads, we're not gonna be planning to cite anyone's comments by name tonight, but you've certainly heard some of the concerns out there about admittedly some negative impact vacation rentals. Short-term rentals can have on the community. I would certainly point out, like most other things we deal with in public policy, there's pluses and minuses. We've seen properties that really could use the investment invested in because of the opportunities presented by short-term rentals. Most of them are not owned by out-of-town corporations, a good number are owned by local folks. Some are owned by people that are purely in it for the business aspect. I know anecdotally that some of them are people that have identified the house a home, they hope to retire to, or someday move to, into rivers, and this is the way they, they pay the mortgage on that property. Likewise, we've had a lot of folks first introduced to our community through short-term rentals. It is true, at the same time, that the vast majority of our short-term rentals, and my best number right now, is some of them haven't got their registrations in for this year yet. They're, they were due January first, and Joe Matson is following up on that, but where was I going to that? The vast majority of the forty-seven licensed vacation rentals are individual, single-family homes in residential neighborhoods. We have a few second-floor units in the downtown. We have some that are in commercial areas, like the one East Wind River waterfront. A, I don't know if we have any right now in multi-unit buildings. We did it one time, I have a couple licensed over at St. Luke's Apartments next door. But there's a significant background in state statutes where the ability of Wisconsin municipalities has been constrained by action of the legislature. And those are some of the things that Andrew will be talking about as, as background. So, I just, my suggestion is that he could lead into the conversation. I've got here, and Dave could be sharing with the online audience the letter from Weston Dunn, senior council packets, and then, this is meant to be, obviously, since the chair's called it, pretty free-form discussion among the council with the idea at the end of saying, are there, are there any changes that council at least wishes to pursue further? There, there, I did my Captain Obvious presentation. So with that, if there aren't any objections, I'll turn it over to Attorney Andrews. And I'm, I'm sorry, Andrew, we've got your, your letter up on the board here, so maybe, maybe you see where you're at.
Yeah, I do have, excuse me, pull-up on, on YouTube there, so, thank you for that.
Yep.
Yeah, so just to kind of give you the overview of the point of us doing this, as Greg said, I set this up as an introduction, we've got the summary of what short-term rentals look like, and, you know, a little bit of what the city can and can't do. So, sixty-six, one-on-one, four of the statutes prohibit a ban on short-term rentals, STRs, rentals of seven days or more. So the city cannot step in at that point. The city could if it wanted to technically ban shorter terms, but but certain amount are required to, to be allowed. The city could regulate those intermediate sort of lengths between six and twenty-nine days. They could limit that to a hundred and eighty days total in a three-hundred-and-sixty-five day period. And that timer isn't something, I think we discussed in a previous session, it's not something that can start for everybody on the same day, it can only start on that first rental date on for a particular property.
So just, just to make clear, council, a local unit could outright ban, correct me if I'm wrong, could, could prohibit stays of less than seven days within the municipality.
Yep, that's correct. So that's, that's out there as a possibility, I feel there are relatively few places that have done that, but there are places out there that have done that. So, you can regulate other ways, there's licensing, for example, that the city already uses, as long as those don't conflict with the statutes or the provisions. So, to give the list of what the city already regulates, already requires, is this next list here, and it's kind of long, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. But you've got, you know, noise levels need to be reasonable, so that addresses some people's concerns. You can't like add tents or RVs to your property to add more guests. You have to subject, you have to apply for room tax, permit, and pay those. You need to maintain a guest register, maintain, register the amounts paid, the time of the rental. The city can request that. Certain fire burning is, you know, prohibited or regulated here. I'm just kind of skipping down to the bottom. And there's, you know, an insurance requirement, so you've got this, this big long list of requirements already there, that I think already address a lot of the concerns, excuse me, that were brought up in the emails. That perhaps the city needs to enforce in a different way or something, I don't know if that's even a problem, but but it is there. Next, I go into the room taxes a little bit. The ordinance, there's eight percent room tax. It's paid by lodging marketplaces. The statute requires this payment by lodging marketplaces, and likely means that the city can't require specific breakouts by property, by the lodging marketplaces. But that doesn't mean you can't require that of individual owners or for those particular properties. And then we also recently ran into the, you know, challenges to amounts paid. Taxors are allotted for a year, but but the city can look back and review things for four years. And then zoning, one issue with the zoning, I just wanted to pay attention, if I was reviewing zoning, there's no mention of short-term rentals anywhere. Right now, there's, there's kind of out allowance for it in the language in the R1 zoning, but but no direct mention of short-term rentals. So, in the next section then, clarifying changes. These are changes that I think the city should consider, just purely to make the ordinances clear, not to, not necessarily to change anything in any kind of radical way, but just to make it more easily interpretable. So, the biggest one that I noticed, in relation to all of this, is family. So, the definition of family up there on your screen, as it's used, we've got that first section that defines family, the second one, I quoted there, ten-one-twenty-eight, not more than three quarters are lodgers, not members of the family, is sort of the provision that allows these rentals. And that definition of family fitting in as a- And that definition of family fitting in as a way, is kind of part of the way that allows this rental to take place just is particularly confusing when you start trying to figure out, you know, what, what do you do when you have multiple people in a house who aren't related to each other? So.
How do you enforce that? Knock on the door, show me, show me your papers?
Yeah.
We're, we're not in that business.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, yeah, that, that first issue that I bring up, I, I was just pointing out several of the different ways that it's hard to enforce. And that's, what you want in your ordinances is enforceability. You want to be able to actually, you know, do the thing that the ordinance says it's trying to do. And here, family, we've got like, say someone staying for seven days. You've got three friends who might be considered family, but because they're the ones renting the property, but then if three more friends show up, do they count as boarders? Does everybody have to pay, or is it just the first person? Do, do three of the five people have to pay? Like, how does that work with the definition of family, given the nebulous status of all those people? And then, yeah, as Greg said, in order to enforce it, you, you need to ask for adoption records and marriage certificates and birth certificates. And, and that's far more personal than I think the city wants to get it. And, and it doesn't have to. And so that's why I recommended these other clarifying, potential clarifying changes to it. So the first one, you could use the fire code to determine the number of people who could stay in a given dwelling. So this would be something like 150 square feet for the first person, and then 100 square feet for every additional person after that. It's a number that you could require as part of the short-term rental license. You could require that number to be posted so that it's, it's easily enforceable. You know, show me the number of people here. You count the number of people there, if there's more, to get a ticket.
But, but actually, that's a pretty, that would allow a lot of people in a, in a fairly small dwelling, right? I, I don't recall the standard, but it's, do you have any chance, Andrew, it's like 175 square feet for the first person?
150 for the first, I, I actually, I have that down at the, it's a last bullet point that changed. So 150 square feet for the first person, and 100 square feet for each additional person. It's, it could be potentially a lot of people. But, I, I mean, then you've got the, you're using the fire code, it's pretty straightforward, and you're going by a somewhat almost national standard there. However.
And it does, there are a number of other cities use.
Related. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, a number of other cities use that, but please, let's hasten to potential clarifying change number two, which I sure think is better.
Yeah. Yeah, the simpler, the simpler version is two people per bedroom plus two people. It, it's straightforward, as long as you know the number of bedrooms, legal bedrooms in a place, you know the number of people who can be there. It's also a number that could be, it could just, just like the fire number, it can, it can be required to be posted. It can be part of the license and can be enforced totally easily, except it, it's, it's even easier than, than the fire code because you don't need an in-depth knowledge of the livable square footage of a given house. So those are, those are two that I, I recommend. There are other ways of determining, you know, what, what means to be a family. You could get into more relationship stuff or, or specific numbers of people or that kind of a thing. But these two seem like the, the most straightforward and easily enforceable means of making those, that change.
I've not.
The next, go ahead.
I was going to say, I've not heard any complaints related to overcrowding or the number of people, but that can contribute to other problems. If you've got, you know, 12 people in a one, in a, in a single-family house. Our ordinance is silent on that issue now, so it seems.
And, and that's really the, the goal of these changes, the clarifying changes, as I called them. The goal is not really to change much at all, other than to just make things more easily enforceable or, or clearer.
Two people per bedroom plus two.
The next change.
The social, I'm sorry, or kid in a crib. Go ahead, sorry.
Hey, Andrew, Darla had a question for you.
Okay, you might have already talked about this and I missed it. Do you have to use the word family? Could you not substitute that with group?
Sorry, could, could we not use the word family?
Instead of, do you have to use the word family, or can it be substituted? Can we substitute this with group?
Sure, the, the word family can be taken out, the word group could be used, but whatever, whatever word gets used, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm certainly not advocating for the term family to necessarily be used. I, I'm just saying that we, we need to clarify, you know, what, what is, what is actually the limitation that, that the city wants to try to impose here? Because a, as it stands, the limitation i- is very unclear.
No, I know that we're on this change number two. I was, I was referring more to the last change, where you've got grandma, you've got your second cousin, you've got, I don't know, some hillbilly niece, like, you know.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, is that's the problem. Right, so the, the, the problem is that the term family, as it's currently defined, that, that's the issue. So the potential change to that, change one and change two, are, are potential ways to change that to make it more clear.
I think generally, in terms of zoning districts, most of us still live in a world where, well, a, a single-family house is a single-family house. Now, how you define that family unit, it's changed a lot over the years, really. But a two-family generally is, a two-family is going to be cooking and bath facility separate for two households or two groups, however defined. Yeah. You know, some folks have said that language about, you know, family and not more than three boarders or tenants means, you know, for example, that, say, say you, you rent an Airbnb that's a fairly large house and you have four couples, they aren't related to each other, well, you're, you're in violation. Well, you know, wait a minute. If I rent a house as a, not as a short-term rental, but if I own or long-term rent a house, I can have as many guests as I want. And, you know, is, is it an analogy that generally, if you've got those eight people staying there, they're not all signing the, they're not all registering on Airbnb as, there's one person whose credit card generally is paying the bill. So isn't that really the same thing? That person has rented that property, the others are their guests. But, so, but I, I do think that may be an area where our zoning code's gotten a little out of date.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the maximum occupancy considered when the, the county does their site visit? Or inspection, do they, do they set a maximum number at that time?
It's a good point, because they have to meet a that cap standard. Joe, I don't know that to you.
They should, but not, I, I don't know if they're personally made available to the people they inspect in Mass or County. Something I do.
Okay, that's a good question.
I mean, they do a site inspection, correct?
My understanding, yes.
Every, every three years? Every two years? Okay.
Could I ask, are we discussing the word family because we want to determine what R1 is? Or are we discussing it because we want to let these businesses into these R1 districts?
We're discussing what the term family means because currently there's, the, the definition is essentially unenforceable. So you could have, you could have 30 people in your house, and as long as you say that they're your cousins, they can live in your house with you. But if you have, you know, if you own the house and you live there and you have four, you know, a family of four you're not related to staying with you, they're, they're violating the ordinance. It, it's too, it, it's too un, the, the measurement is difficult and it relies specifically on information that's hard to enforce against people. So it's not, it's not for a business, it's not against the people living there, it's not for the people who live in Two Rivers, it's not against the people who want to rent dwellings, it's just making it clear for everybody. That's the point of all of these initial changes that I'm, that I'm talking about.
And you're suggesting a potential change to limit two people per bedroom plus two? Would that, that clarify that family situation, doesn't it?
Exactly, that's right. So it would just be, it'd be supplanting that, that family definition with something like, you know, capacity or something like that, the, the group living there. It, it just, it makes it simple so that the number of people in a house is a more reasonable number.
Which would address some of the concerns that some of the almost would not.
Yeah, right? Totally, yes.
Andrew, are you suggesting that standard, though, only for short-term rentals? Because I, I mean, I, I'm really, I don't get a vote on this, I could really be on board with that. I certainly wouldn't see imposing that on, right, long-term rentals or people that own their own house. Sometimes family emergencies mean you've got four or five relatives extra under your roof, I'm told.
I mean, that is, that, that's up for the council to decide, I think.
Right.
It, it would, a- as, you know, sort of as suggested, it would apply to everybody because it would be kind of a, a, a limitation on, on R1 in general, which would then be applied everywhere. But it, it certainly doesn't have to be that way. We could leave family in place and just apply this to, to short-term rentals. But I, I would still say, that doesn't change the fact that using a term like family is nebulous. And, and we could certainly carve out exceptions, there's no reason not to, to also be able to do that. As, again, these are just recommendations for, for potential changes. So we could certainly carve out exceptions for, you know, if there's a family emergency, if it's, you know, if, if you, if you want to make something an exception for, for blood relatives or something like that, you know, blood and adoption and marriage, that, that's certainly something that could be done. Those are all available. But leaving something like family in place for, for, on the resident of the house can, it, it can make things unnecessarily confusing in, in terms of enforcement.
Or frankly, you could have the fire code standard for owner occupied or long-term rental. And I'll say generally, the more stringent standard tied to number of bedrooms, just for the short-term rentals. Just, just a thought.
Yeah.
Yes. For the short-term rentals, wouldn't it be easier to, kind of like we do for hotels? They have two per bed, that way, otherwise a two-bedroom house could have 12 people in it, which isn't really feasible, but you have two per bed and then say if there's a hide-a-bed in a couch in the living room or something.
That's where, yeah, two per bedroom plus two, that covers the hide-a-bed or a couple of little kids in, in cribs, portable cribs. It seems that would cover most people.
Mm-hmm. And we could, I mean, we could include an age restriction if you wanted to. We could say adults over the age of 18 or something like that.
Yeah, go ahead. One other thing, the Airbnb host also limit the number of guests that are allowable per household. Like I'm looking at one in Two Rivers here that says eight guests, four bedrooms, three baths. I mean, if our calculation conflicts with that, that's not fair to the Airbnb operator.
Maybe still, maybe that plus, it is going to have more.
Okay, that's fair.
I just want to clarify, we're, we're bringing all this up to pass on to the Planning Commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Only zoning.
What?
Only zoning.
Only zoning.
Only zoning would have to go to Plan Commission for recommendation, everything else would be left at council. But we're not really boycotting any of this crap.
No, I know, but this issue of, in, in an R1 district, are, are you going to be discussing that? Who's on the Planning Commission?
Certainly, certainly can, Adam and I are.
I mean, I, I think it would be worth discussing.
Which, what would be worth discussing, I'm sorry?
The R1 district, to clarify what it is and.
Okay, or residential in general, because that would be R1, R2.
I, I know, with the principle of, because the short-term rental people are in there.
Yeah, we're using it as a, using it as a office. They're using it as a residential.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah, they're sleeping, they're, that's what you do on residence, watch TV, sleep.
Yeah, they also can do that in a hotel. That's what the beef is with that one particular rental, short-term rental, in R1 districts. Actually, to me, it seems like we are putting mixed zoning everywhere, like, like, I mean, like an R4 house in the middle of an R2, you know, most kinds of things.
We've got a request for that, plan, recently, the Plan Commission hasn't acted on that. There is a house that's used for multi-family. If you're referring to recently a Plan Commission, the gentleman has asked to rezone it to R4. That has not moved forward because of the concern about these options, yeah.
Well, it's just, it's still always, it still seems like things are clear because why would it even be brought up? It's like, you know what I mean, like, to change a house or something like that, to change the zoning. I, I know that people are, the CUP, conditional use permit, I guess that's all right, but, I mean, because at least you can put it back, but this is partly why some of these people are in trouble with the short-term rentals. Anyway, we got a lot of letters about this.
You got some.
What?
You got some, unless you got more. Yep.
I, I know, but I, I guess I think a person should at least listen to people and see, see reasons.
I don't think that's what brought us here tonight, is the council has heard concerns.
And out in the public, I mean, we hear from the opposite side. But out in public, we hear from people who are like, we came here for the Blues Fest, and we loved your community so much, we decided to buy a home here. All right, and there's, there's more instances like that than we realize, but you have to listen to both sides, you know, and it's not all bad.
I'm not saying it's all bad for our home.
No, I know you're not, but I'm just saying that there's two sides to everything.
Well, sure, but that should be the, so why aren't you listening to the short-term rental side? Why aren't you listening to that? You know, and we all. We aren't going about this very well on. You know, there, there's ordinances everywhere, for example, for light pollution, but it doesn't seem to matter, it comes from a short-term rental. Yeah, I just, um, I don't know. But we're not going to put a low income housing into your neighborhood, are we?
Kenny.
There we go again with that.
What?
Kenny, we got all.
There we go again with that.
Well, yeah. So let's focus on the short-term rental stuff.
We, we, I do believe council's heard concerns about short-term rentals. That's why this, that's why we're here today. It's not to blow it off, I'm sorry, that's not my prerogative to say, I guess, to staff, but the intent is, we, we discussed this in a previous work session, and the council said, well, for starters, I'm paraphrasing, but as staff, come back and give us some ideas.
Correct.
Here we are.
Yes, this is people, there's some people that are out there that have concerns about this. As Darla said, there are people that don't have concerns with this, and they're fine with it, but let's take a look at what some of the issues are, and is there something you can clarify or help? Maybe we do it, maybe we don't, I don't know, that's why we're kind of here to talk about.
And looking at the state law, actually, because there's laws that, that can be, you know.
To how many people are allowed to stay within a dwelling, that we certainly limit that to short-term rentals.
limit that to short-term rentals. Um I would wanna, as Greg mentioned before, I wanna impose that on individual rentals or individual rent rentals in your apartment, people that own their own homes. Um Greg mentioned family emergencies, the I got little kids, they have sleepovers. I mean, it is, and now you can really tell people that they can't have birthday parties anymore in their own homes, and they can't have kids' sleepover, or cousin's sleepover, or all the other stuff that real experienced guys kids, um all because they wanna limit what we're doing in short-term rentals, so I would try to make that very clear as uh we move forward with any kind of a change, that that we're not uh we're not striking those people that rent an apartment or live in their own home as being restricted as to who can be there. You know, sometimes mom and dad or cousin or whatever gets sick as well, and I think I stated you were intended for your time, you know, those were dumb, you got them out.
It's more than.
And you can, there's also sorts of circumstances left in approach, uh I would wanna be very careful.
Well, I think one way to cover that is if your home is owner occupied, you can do that. There are short-term rentals that are owner occupied, then what what would it matter how many people they have? Just look at it.
Well, many people don't like that idea of the owner being present at time of occupancy rental. We have to be mindful of that, too.
Okay. Is is there, is there generally support with the idea of having specific to short-term rentals, which right now, under our ordinance, is, I believe, everything under thirty days, having some limit on the number of folks in the unit? I guess along the lines of May's on the Bedford County.
We could show hands on what people think, if they want to, or comment if you want to.
Should there be a limit on the number of people?
That's the question specifically with short-term rentals, for 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 starters.
Well, you know, if if everything should be taken individually, I mean, some of the houses are a lot bigger, some houses have a lot more bedrooms, I'd have to say it goes by how many bedrooms are in the house.
Right, that's what was suggested, like, two people per bedroom, so if you had four bedrooms, that would be eight, plus two floaters, we'll call it, whether two people that end up on a sleeper sofa, or two little kids that end up in their pack-and-plays, or cribs, or whatever they call them now. Um and that that would afford some flexibility, but I'm not hearing a lot of support for ex- extending some, that kind of a rigorous limit beyond the short-term.
No, I don't think so.
Short-term rental sector.
Like Adam said, we don't want to start regulating what people can have, the council that they own.
You got a lot of people in this town that grew up in, you know, there might have been four brothers that shared one bedroom in the three-bedroom ranch, and three sisters that shared the other, and families worked that out, and one bathroom, with one line.
Yeah. So, um, show of hands, is there feelings of limiting the amount, the amount of people that can stay at a short-term rental? How many people think?
A bedroom.
Uh some, what that might be?
That's the concept.
Yeah, that's the concept, which is already kind of being talked about.
I guess then, what what's the level of support to limit eliminate based on two times the number of bedrooms plus two? Not that that's the only option, but that's one that was put out.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
As as that would be another bedroom, bedroom because of couches, or not a kitchen or anything, but.
No, but the bedroom should be, council could do a below bed in there if they wish.
And so I like that comment, including the inspection. It could be a flannel mattress.
Yep.
And, I mean.
Plus two beyond that.
Yeah. Yeah, plus two, yes, because you have, people have kids, and I think you need to be very mindful of that.
And as I as I said, these are, these are, again, only suggestions, we could, I I mean, if you wanna account even further for for underage minors, we could make this a limit solely on adults, uh if if you wanted to. Um there there's, these are not, uh, these are not meant to be limiting, they're meant to be ideas, uh, possibilities, uh, for for changing this to a more enforceable ordinance.
Again, we have nothing, right?
Yeah.
Maybe maybe to Adam's point, it becomes two times the number of bedrooms plus four, whether it's a living room or an enclosed porch, with, you know, a day bed on it or something.
Who would do that inspection?
That would at this point require either we coordinate with the county, or or it would simply be good faith until there's a complaint. There is supposed to be.
Right.
Yes.
Should that be, should that be included with the fire department?
Well, the fire department doesn't actively inspect these on behalf of the city. I think it's more a matter of of enforcement if you have a complaint. It would also be, ah, that's the other thing, if it's identified on the license, one of the things we talked about is a requirement, I don't think it's in there now, that the license be displayed at the unit, and included in that would be the maximum number of people, kind of like a hotel room, the maximum number of people that is approved.
Uh what what is required currently is a is a proof of a current inspection by the county health department.
Yeah.
You could ask the county to give us the number of bedrooms, too.
Yep, or we could cross-check it against the assessing records, if there's an inaccuracy then, or a dispute, then somebody goes out and verifies it.
Mm-hmm. Now, would be variable depending on the unit, how many bedrooms they have.
Right.
Look, that, to me, that's a logical start, I mean, it reduces how many people on one facility who's contributing to violations, I think, parakeet, annoyed, other issue. That might be a practical way to begin.
And that would simply be a change in the licensing part of the ordinance, I wouldn't have to go to plan commission, that's right there within the licensing, or not there right now.
So was it two people per bedroom, living room, whatever, plus two? So it could be this three-bedroom, a living room, in a close area, I'm horrible at that, but.
Or is it just two per bedroom plus four?
Plus four, like, make it easier, because if you can't do a set of.
Right.
Whatever else they want to put up, yeah. Right, yeah, maybe, or the basement, yeah. Their basement, the waitress, or something.
Right.
I have a living room, but nobody should sleep out there, you know.
Right.
Yeah, I think maybe the plus four helps it.
It's more stringent, although we have that, because we have nothing.
So, to move us along, could we have a show of hands of who would be supportive of two people per bedroom and living room, plus four?
Good.
Yes.
Two for each bedroom, two for the living room, plus four.
Plus you get extra four to.
No, two per bedroom.
Two per bedroom plus four.
So that could be an actual bedroom, and then you get plus four.
Yeah, so take the living room out.
Yep. The living room might have a sleeper sofa.
But that's.
The dining room might have a sleeper sofa and some.
So if it's a three-bedroom, two, four, six, you have ten people, that can stay there.
My hand is up.
Sorry, Bill, must've stood there.
Must be tired.
Yeah, I haven't started to get tired, yep.
Go ahead, Bill.
So, sounds like there's uh support for that idea, that's something, uh, it can go back and forth more than one time, it's those easily, right? Especially if, uh, teenagers likely, uh, could not impose them until next year anyway.
That's the licensing. Could be imposed prospectively on new license, new license applications that come in after adoption, but it'd be kind of hard to go back.
Renewals, too.
And, right, although renewals should be.
Is that some that can see come in?
Right, right.
Yeah, it should be on that.
It's technically.
Do those things that license revoked, have they had a lot of like nuisance calls and stuff?
That's one of the other things that the attorney wants to talk about, because it talks about um calls to the police, I believe, it doesn't, we we could use some more clarity there, too.
Yeah, to to just kind of move on to the next uh items then, um, I bring up, the term short-term rental itself is not used, uh, it it's not in the zoning code, it it should be somewhere, it's it's requiring, uh, the statutes require the city to allow short-term rentals, so it it needs to be allowed in some way.
So that would have to go to the planning commission then to review?
That would.
At some point?
Mm-hmm. Um, the the next uh change would be, uh, there's, like, I guess, did did people want to talk about the the use of short-term rental there?
I'm sorry, where where are you at, Andrew?
So, so, yeah, short-term rentals, short-term rental, yeah, each four there, uh, just, uh, it's not used, and and needs to be, needs to be used somewhere.
We'll send that down to the planning commission.
I think we've viewed it to date as being a residential use of the property, but that's problematic because of the definition of family that you talked about, so it would go in, and before the night is up, we'll be talking about would it go in as a permitted use, subject to licensing, or a conditional use, also subject to licensing. I'll let Andrew get to that point, but that's.
Yeah, we'll hold off on that for now, because that's a much bigger change than than these other ones, so. Um, the, uh, next would be, uh, two calls to, so, uh, one way to add a license revoked um is, uh, two calls to authorities that relate to criminal or nuisance activities at the short-term rental. Um, so I I I mean, I think it should be, th- this language should be read to to basically say that they're legitimate calls, um, but as it currently stands, it could be read um a- as illegitimate calls, it is just calling the police for essentially no reason, um, a- and hopefully the, you know, the the council wouldn't take action to revoke, or or, uh, licensing, a body wouldn't take action to revoke, just based on two calls like that, uh, without evidence that the calls were legitimate, but um we should add some, I I think this, there should be some clarifying language there, saying, you know, either they're generating a a police report of prohibited activity, or, you know, that resulted in a citation being issued by the city, or something along those lines. Um, some some clarifying line as to when those two calls count.
Legitimate and citation issued, be a valid part of that?
It could be, that 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 part's up to you, I I I'm not telling you what to to put in with this, I'm I'm saying as a, as an option, I I think there should be, to to clarify, there should be some kind of language along those lines.
I think those points would be valid, to add, uh, legitimate call in violation, uh, witnessed by the police department, because we had situations that previously, there were nineteen calls, and seventeen were really not valid.
Right, so that's, yeah, so that that that's the issue, is it's, what, I I don't know what line the council wants to draw, but I believe there should be, a a line here uh would be helpful for just clarifying the ordinance, whether it's citation issued, or um, uh, citation paid, or 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 conviction, uh, achieved, whatever, whatever line the city wants to draw there.
Shannon had a question or comment?
Yeah, so, for within the, um, if we're gonna limit it to two calls of nuisance, or um, something of the like, would there be a time limit, like, two calls within the year of the license, or two calls just of the ownership of that property, like, I guess I'd want more of a timeline than that.
So it 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 would be, also revocation of the license, so a license lasts for one year, um, and then, uh, they they could reapply, if, say, they they had two complaints, they got revoked, they could reapply, uh, at the next year, um, but we could certainly add additional pieces, like, if you get it revoked in one year, then you're not eligible for renewal in the next year, or something like that, there are various other ways to to ensure compliance.
Right now, as far as what could get you in front of the city council for a revocation, it's two in any twelve-month period, so I I would interpret that that is a rolling twelve-month period, so if you get to the point where you have the second violation, however defined, the current ordinance would say, then you're, then it's fair game for the city council to revoke your license.
Or no.
Yeah, and they, they might both be.
And then it comes up, if they have extra restrictions to get their act in line.
Yeah, because it's May, it's not夏, it just gets it within your discretion to revoke.
Any other thoughts about this one?
Yeah, because right now, it's two or more calls, that's a little trouble, I can I can call all night long, rack up the calls against your property, as a responding agency.
I'm doing too much to the right, because it's something that's.
Yeah.
It's not gonna work. Like, too many people in the building, they could see.
Are true senses.
Right, yeah, like, consistently, like, two dozen.
But what, what are we gonna count as a, something they did wrong? If you got two, two sound ordinance violations in twelve months, that's not very serious.
Two hundred eighty thirties or something, that's more serious. So where is that?
Right now.
Why do I have?
Yeah, right now, it's pretty loose. We haven't brought anybody before you to have the license taken, but it's, it's pretty loose.
And I mean, the history of what's been going on at these places, too, is pretty innocuous, I mean, it's been dog feces, it's been lab noise, when people are leaving to go somewhere else, there's there's some other instances, yeah. You know, it's sawed in the eye of the holder, you know, I might leave here too loud, but I, and like, what's what's on here is that they were unfound and unfounded, if there's something that's actually a problem and the police are involved, I think that should be.
Something.
Yeah.
Did, does the excessive noise fall back on the noise, uh, the noise ordinance, and and I believe that says amplified sound, so, loud talking.
Thank you.
It would have to pass the desert rule test, that property might have the property.
What it should be is two arrests and convictions in a twelve-month period.
Two criminal.
Two criminal arrests.
Two criminal charges. Is it, is it fair rested? Well, we use a case against.
Okay, so, uh, just to clarify, if if we're going all the way to the point of some criminal uh conviction, are 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 we talking about basically just a person not being eligible for a license again, or or is this, uh, still just the the single license being revoked? Because by the time somebody goes from being arrested to being convicted, the year's likely to have run already.
Well, that's the right way to go about it, because, I mean, i- i- if you have too many people in your house, and you get caught that many times, that's not gonna be something that's gonna get you put in jail, it's not gonna.
Not a criminal.
And then, for heaven's sakes, i- i- if that's the way it's gonna be, then why the heck have it done, folks? it on the books? I mean, we're putting this on the books because we're here for people that are in trouble about some of the things that are going on there.
Well, we could just say arrest without the conviction.
Are there violations on that? Living, really, having it as two. Does it add that to the notice that having it as two?
I mean, as much as I understand that people don't like noise, I also get the fact that there's gonna be noise, that there's noise at residence, and I forget the noise, the noise ordinance, but it changed it multiple times. I don't even, isn't there a comfort of zero? Because I know you can't have a radio on.
If it's clearly audible at the property line, I think that's still a standard.
Yeah, which is too strict, in my opinion. I mean, and you're gonna have people that are staying at these residence, and they make their home at two o'clock, and they talk outside, and that's a noise ordinance violation. Just like that. It's a noise ordinance violation at your house, by honest. I voted to not have that, but that's another topic.
You know, I mean, right now, what's been going on, they're unfounded, but if they're founded, like underage drinking, and a citation is written, that means that they're just gonna have to show up to court. I don't, you know, they're not going to jail, they're just, you know. I think that's kind of where you draw the line. If the police go over there, talk to them, and don't want pursuit anymore, that's a warning. So, I think it's, anything up till a citation is given out, that's okay, and past that is where the issue starts, where you can only have two, three, or whatever.
Zoning codes, bring the citation?
I believe we, for enforcement, we'd have to. Correct me if I'm wrong, if someone violates the municipal zoning ordinance, the enforcement mechanism would be a citation, I assume, into municipal court.
Yeah, and that's, I actually use the word conviction there, that's just, that's the one I think about it in my head, even if it's just a municipal citation being paid. I probably should have reworded that, but yeah, that's the line I was thinking.
And warnings be given, though.
Yeah, just like officers have discretion with animal at large, or other things.
Which is good, they need discretion. I'm just wondering how tight we're gonna be of these kind of people that are staying.
Could we just put in a bit your, I also, this, for violations maybe used against your license for non-renewal, just to try and get down to be more strict with the people that they rent through, and they cross them, not to screw up, because they could accidentally rent to somebody who's in a hurry, and that would happen, who's a state doesn't have a do with this here, but they may vet the people that they have coming here more if they know it's possible. Just like, I guess, a agreement.
Or citations or warnings for violating the number of people staying at your property. A little bit of the same.
And then, this can be used against renewal of your license.
But, yeah, I think you're right. Whatever the criteria is where the council could yank a license, that's not the right verb, you know what I mean? Probably, that should also be a basis for a non-renewal. The council may not decide to step in, or, help me out, Andrew, I mean, it's not like the city foregoes the opportunity. You might say, oh shoot, there were actually three citations that were written there last year. We didn't catch that. Maybe as a council, we'd have pulled the license, had staff reported it to us, but here it is now, it's renewal time. I mean, both could be options, and not pulling the license wouldn't foreclose the council saying, uh-uh, based on this record, we're not renewing it.
That's right.
And I'm not trying to be overly strict on these people, and that, but I do hear from, I think our communication is talking about people that have a lot of people there, and some, from big apartments, and I don't think limiting that to the number we're looking at in that too should be too big a video, but I think we need to be somewhat strict on that, too.
Yep, and that's overnight, yes. That doesn't mean you don't have more people there than that during the day. You've got relatives in town, they come over. Hopefully, they go home. We've all been there. I hope they go home. I'll speak for myself. And Andrew, do you feel strongly, I mean, does it have to either be something where the person basically pleads no contest, or pays the fine, or it's adjudicated, or can it simply be outstanding citations? Because even in municipal court, these things can take a long time.
Yeah, I mean, it can be outstanding citations. I'm just saying, we should have a clear line, because two calls to authorities is entirely ambivalent and can be done by somebody in bad faith, and so revocation might not happen when the, you know, council finds out what the circumstances are related to those two calls, the fact that somebody has to waste their time and be dragged in for, you know, something that is ambivalent like that, I think we should provide a clear line, so that the ordinances are more easily understood.
The other thing to bear in mind is it could be multiple citations of a property resulting from one person's action on one date. I'm not being an advocate for the industry here, I'm not, but, you know, one bad apple could, if the council really was strict on this, mess it up for you for the whole licensing period.
Sure.
But.
And we could address that by requiring different dates, that kind of thing, but, yeah. But there's also no reason that somebody couldn't cause a citation in the morning and cause another one in the evening.
Yeah.
So, property owners not getting citations, so they could argue that they didn't get the tenant card, so. That's good, funny, that the ticket's going towards the renter, and it's also the owner of the property's been violated?
Help me out, Andrew, it's, I assume, it's a call to the premises, so if the ordinance violation happens there, I'm assuming the way it is now, it can be counted against that licensed premises.
That's what I was intending to hear. If the council wants to go another way, and go against the person or owner specifically instead of the premises, well, actually, that wouldn't work as well, just because of the way the licenses are issued, based on the address.
Right.
But, I mean, it could, if you wanted to try to incorporate it against a particular owner, that's something, you know, that we could look at. If they own multiple properties, it could affect multiple properties, too.
So, then we got.
I think it should be individual property.
Yeah, well, currently, that's what it is.
Individual property, if he had three properties, and one is constantly being, when that's against within the property causing the problem, it would be coming on the order to put more restrictions or more selective than choosing his guests.
So, obviously, we're kind of in agreement, it needs to be changed from just two calls. And so far, it sounds like we're up to citations.
Okay.
Correct? Right? There's any citations?
You mean two?
Two. I don't know what the number would be, but.
Oh, but citation.
Some, yeah, I don't know. If two is fair, I think warnings should be taken into consideration.
You think it's.
Can we have it written up for us, and we have to decide tonight, at least, it's considered as an option, as not so much a problem?
Yeah, we're just looking for some broad direction.
I don't know what that.
Okay.
You know, as far as warning, or as far as a warning, a written warning, as you have kind of, referring to like, they go to the property, they talk to the person who's offending, and they go back, you know, to their job. Now, there's no paper.
I wasn't talking, I was talking about written warning.
Yeah.
You know, they have too many people in the house, or something like that, they could technically get a warning for that, and if they get a bunch of warnings, if they get ten warnings in a year, that seems a little excessive to continue.
Yeah, frankly, whoever's handing out the warnings, it's not doing the job.
It could be different cops at each particular time as well.
Yeah.
With minor things. And it doesn't even have to be ten, I think six is a lot. I mean, if you drive around and you get caught for speeding, and you speed again, and you get a warning, you get caught within three months, you automatically get a citation. When you're driving on the roads.
That's just weird.
Yes. But yes, I mean, that's kind of the rule that they have there, and I'm not saying they're even as strict as that, but I think warnings should possibly count for something. I don't know why. I don't have that answer. I haven't think about it right now.
And that warning would be up to discretion of the police officer?
Yeah.
Which they should have discretion. I don't wanna take the discretion away, you know. I don't think that's there, because sometimes there's violations that really don't rise to the point of a citation order.
And this still wouldn't remove the state council's ability to decide whether or not somebody should be revoked based on those two, it would just allow for it being drawn before the council.
Okay, yeah, that's, that makes sense. We can start with two citations, we can revisit it.
We also need a feedback loop to the clerk's office, or inspections, or tourism, somebody who's keeping track of these things, otherwise, council, you know, we could all sit here and collectively say, oh my God, that property's had six citations, or, you know, three warnings and three citations.
So, there, is there?
On to Tim's point, does it just go against the person who offended, or is it gonna go against the property as well?
Against the license, like individual license, but I don't think what we're trying to do is get something so that we can put pressure on the license holder.
Right.
Kind of at their.
Something that basically says the number showed that there's, your property has created a problem in the neighborhood, and that's, I think, the concern we're hearing from people.
Yes.
Either they perceive they are, or they're worried that a vacation rental in their neighborhood's gonna create problems.
And if we had some kind of system where officers go out there, and they write a written warning, citation, whatever, then we have physical evidence, facts, whatever, that says it. Right now, it's more of their word against theirs.
What mechanism does the owner have to screen potential renters, though? I mean, that's, I mean, it says something about the sex registry in here. I've rented many Airbnbs, and I've never been asked, I mean, what mechanism does the owner have to screen potential guests and say yes or no? I don't think there is.
They may have to get a waiver because our ordinance says that you cannot reside here if you didn't live here when you made the offense.
No, 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 no. So, you're gonna rent Airbnb in Surgeon Bay, the person in Surgeon Bay doesn't know if you're a sex offender or not?
Right, but I wonder if you put some kind of a waiver when you register that says you are not. Not that it's gonna stop you, you can lie, but if you're found to be lying.
Right, then your brother, your girlfriend just rents the apartment, and you go with them, I mean, how, there's really no mechanism to.
Joe, Joe may have something.
So, using Airbnb as your example, not only does the property have a rating, but a renter can rate.
Okay.
So, depending on where you're going, if you should, as an example, when we did last year at Fort Keys, I had submitted my rating, or mine and my wife's rating, before they would let us rent that property.
Oh, really? Okay.
And so, a rented property can say they're loud, they're noisy, or the police contact because of them, and that's with your profile.
Okay, I did know that a little. All right, very good.
And that's, or something, that's something that the people who want to do, that's for them to figure out. If the city wants to regulate, and has the power to do that, decides to do it. If you wanna consider that, you know, whether somebody renting out these short-term rentals can do it, that's up to you to consider, but you have the power to regulate it, and they can stop people from going into their house if they want, based on whether or not they give them information.
So, as far as the ability to revoke based on violations, council, I'm hearing you wanna see something back that it would be based on two events, but something more significant than a call for service. We may come back with something that has, you know, citations or arrests, something, you know, and action.
Yeah, definitely.
Going with that, let's say by May, they racked up two instances. Are we just gonna wait until the following year to deny them, you know, a license, or are we going to take their license at that particular time? They cannot rent anymore for that year. I mean, when would you say that?
Non-renewal, that's an option.
As written, it's a revocation, then that can also potentially be used as grounds for non-renewal.
Potential.
Could be used illegally, or at the next renewal, up to the expression, city council?
I mean, I think that's something that would have to be added, but I don't see why not. Yeah, I don't know, well, there is the issue with banning. I don't know that we can stop it permanently. I think it'd have to be a reasonable amount of time before it could be reapplied for, but it could be revocation and the non-renewal. I know that that's acceptable.
Okay, why don't we plan to bring something back on that?
I mean, I'm kind of with Tim. I think they should get the opportunity to clean up their act or whatever, and be able to reapply the next one.
Do you intend to get.
They could get.
One sixty years.
And that could be one of the things the council takes into account if it comes in front, or maybe it's better if it's three strikes, you're out. There's an awful lot of three strikes, you're out. I don't know. But, okay, I think we're gonna bring something back. At least it's tied to evidence, greater evidence of a violation.
Okay, so, the last point then, on just the clarifying gene, is that there's a penalties section of this ordinance that has two of the, like, eight different penalties for violating this ordinance, so I would just like to consolidate the penalties into the penalties section. It just makes sense to me, and hopefully will clarify things for people, but it's just moving things around slightly so that it's all penalties show up when you look at the penalty section.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So, you don't wanna, you only wanna change the order they're in, that's it? Yeah. Okay.
Helen?
There's just three things that I would like to maybe consider, or have considered for possible other changes. One would be lighting, and this would go, again, only to STRs. Outdoor lighting should be turned off at that 10:00 PM, with exceptions for porch garage lighting. If you do have that complaint out there, we'd be like, the lights on, and there's nobody even there. Again, it's an STR, it's not necessarily a home where people may be coming to help with, you know, throughout the week, this place is just a vacant, and it's become an issue with that neighborhood, and I don't think that's too hard or too much to ask. Getting garage and porch lights would be different. They can stay on 24/7 if they like, but I think the excessive lighting that can be in people's backyards doesn't really have to be that.
What happened?
We were talking about lighting here is recessed, so it doesn't stream.
Or we can do that, because, I mean, we do look at lighting when we go through businesses, you know, and example, well, we had their lighting has to shine. we had their lighting has to shine out, has to be pretty much zero off to the, the rest of the people. And maybe even though this isn't a business, but yet it's kind of a business, they should have to adhere to maybe some of those same lighting challenges.
Uh, there's only ten dollars a year.
Yeah, so I mean, something maybe in there for lighting that spreads off their property. Uh, again, only to STRs.
But only STRs?
Yeah.
So I can be right next door, owner occupied, and I can, I'm, I'm being argumentative, you know, but I can light it up like daytime. That's, that's okay.
Well, I mean, I think there should be something said against that.
Yeah.
But I guess I'm going for against, I think people should have the right kind of motion lights and stuff for security in their, in their own houses. We run there twenty-four seven. These guys don't.
What about if, going along with that, if someone's occupying it? If your lights, but still are still.
Then I think, I think you should. Then I think you should be okay to do that.
If it's, I, and that's what I was gonna add, if it's ninety.
But the lighting ordinance in general should probably be what we have for the rest of us. But I think we should really trim it down on what these STRs are doing when no one's there. I think it's a little excessive.
Yeah, I agree. I think.
The pictures we saw there were quite excessive.
I think if, yeah, if no one's there, yeah, you don't necessarily need the lights on. Except for garage and porch.
Right, I think those.
But if someone's there, they might like to sit out to under the lights or something there.
But I don't think we should be zero spillage in residential. Again, I think people have motion lights, my neighbors have motion lights. Actually, I appreciate them quite honestly.
I, I guess the only thing I'd point out on the motion lights, I mean, if any of you, if you got, especially if you've got, I'll, I'll use Ring as an example, if you've got a Ring floodlight, you might be consulting your phone when that goes off at three in the morning and you're on vacation somewhere. Uh, you know, that, maybe there's a broad exception there because there's security.
And there's, maybe, maybe we're attacking the other type of lighting and that's something we can kind of get to. Maybe it's excess garage lighting or excess spillover. Again, I think the lighting ordinance in general should have some kind of a spillover. Is there gonna be some? Yes. Well, not that far away from each other. I mean, I look at my house, I got the exact minimum, maybe it's sixteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is there gonna be something that stills over the sixteen feet? Probably. I don't think it has to be zero, but I think the excessive stuff should be trimmed out. Um, I think we should, and I think we may even require the noise orders to be posted in the STRs. If we don't, we should make sure that that is so that they're well aware, uh, that we do have a noise ordinance and what that is. Uh, also, it could be something that they could also sign on top of that when renting out the sites, kind of like a, you know, a way of reaching the bottom, so we're just understanding. And then the last one was just, do we wanna cap the number of STRs in our city? Do we wanna have a cap or do we wanna? I would be in favor of a cap. I don't know the number. But I don't, I wouldn't wanna see it get way out of hand to the point where we have a hundred or more. And I think we should put a cap of some sort before we end up getting that. Start at zero, go red twenty-seven.
Do we do that through the planning commission and public carriage? Would that be a manageable approach? Yeah.
Plan commission could give you input. I, I, I'm, I'm gonna defer to the attorney, but I, I think a cap really would be a function of the licensing part of the ordinance. How many, how many licenses is the city willing to issue before it says, or cut you off? And what, what's your take on that, Andrew? Andrew Adams?
Uh, yeah, um, so I you, you, the municipality cannot stop a property from providing these short-term rentals. Uh, they cannot be banned on a, on a given property and I, I'm very concerned about what that would look like, uh, with a with a cap on the number of properties because a, a, a cap means, you know, say you get a hundred, uh, in the city, that hundred and first person, I think, has been banned from short-term renting. Um, at least for the year, uh, and, and potentially if renewal is, uh, more or less guaranteed as long as the person plays by the rules there, banned definitely. Um, so I'd be very concerned about running into a lawsuit from that, um, in short.
I, I could.
We do run into that with bars. We only, we have a limit as to how many bar licenses or liquor licenses that we will hand out. I know that's state law as well.
Statutory.
But we do have a limit, so I don't know that I don't know the law.
That's right. That, that's right. It, it is, it's state law. The bar, the bar, the number of bars you can have is, is state law and diluted by, by state law. And, and, and short-term rentals is the opposite is, uh, state law says that it cannot be, uh, it cannot be banned on a given property. So that's that's the issue we're running into is, is, it's kind of the opposite.
Follow-up question, Andrew, because, you know, right now, short, there are short-term rentals that are under thirty days. And then, and that range of seven nights, uh, some, yeah, seven nights to thirty were constrained. Could a cap be set on the number, and we don't license separately the STRs that are for s- fewer than seven days? Could there be a cap set on, I'll call them short-term STRs?
Yeah, I, I, I believe so. I don't think there would be any problem with that. Uh, if you wanted to separate them out, I don't think there would be an issue.
You'd almost need two categories of licensure then, but.
We, we, that forces people that have sevens to always have seven or more.
Right.
And those people that have under six have to have under six.
Yeah, and that's where this, Kato, Wisconsin drew the dividing line and gave, gave cities much more authority, not total, because, you know, they can rent for up to a hundred eighty days minimum in a year. If the council were interested in either a total numerical cap or, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, or a cap that expressed in terms of proximity, requiring any new licenses be there can't be more than one per block, per block of street, or there can't be more than, you know, one. It can't be a new one established within two hundred feet of another, and it applied solely to rentals of less than seven days. I'll quickly turn it over to the attorney. I think that's all within the realm of legal because you could say none are allowed. I don't know that, nobody's recommending that, but you got that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's an accurate take, yes. Uh, it, it, pretty much any regulation that you wanna do related to that, um, you know, zero to six day period is pretty much on the table.
I would be okay to see some regulation on that.
From prospective, not prospective.
There are cities, one, okay, one of the people who communicated with us over the weekend sent an article that apparently even New York City is finding short-term rentals a problem. Now, some of these cities are going to percentage. No more than two percent of our housing available, I mean, housing can be used for short-term rentals. And even, sometimes I don't think it's a bad idea, even for other things. How many second homes do we have unoccupied? How many short-term rentals? How many rental units that are rented out all year round? And then we have people, my neighbor two blocks away from me, she listed her house a year ago on a Sunday night. She got three offers by the next day. These people aren't gonna keep on looking for homes here. They can never find them. I, I mean, even in this article, it said, one small city was having a problem because the residents decided, you know what? We can't buy housing. We're just gonna move away. We're not gonna even stay here. And in a small city, that's a pretty bad thing to happen. I, I'm just throwing it out. I would be kind of in favor of a percentage. But sometimes I want, I don't know. I hate to tell people what to do with their property, but at the same time, when all you're doing is buying the houses. My neighbor knows a band who said he owns almost a whole block in Two Rivers, or maybe that was just one side of the block. He, he rents it out. He's a, he's into renting and I just, um, if people keep up their housing, it's not so bad, but not all landlords do that. I'm just throwing it out. I, I didn't think it was such a bad idea. Even in New, New Orleans, they're finding it a problem. Very dangerous. Oh, you did?
It's, it's all over the place. I mean, undoubtedly, there's some of the lakefront cities in Michigan, I think it's South Haven, there's a group called Neighborhoods Need Neighbors. Because single-family neighborhoods generally are stable, not a lot of turnover. On the other hand, Sturgeon Bay has a hundred and fifteen vacation rentals. I talked to their planning director today. They're a little smaller than we are, very much a tourism city. She said, far and away, most of them are single-family homes and single-family neighborhoods. They've got an ordinance less stringent than ours now. And there's nothing afoot to change that. Manitowoc's talked about a licensing ordinance. They're not there yet. Um, Port Washington, I talked to, they have a local licensing ordinance. Um, the city wasn't even sure of the number of vacation rentals they have. Um, they aren't doing anything. So there's, there's both sides of the point.
No, I know there are. You should listen to it, but at the same time, even, even off of norm, I started vague when, come and listen out, hold on. The, their housing shortage is also kind of similar.
Well, yeah, I mean, there are a lot of, there's housing shortage all over the country. There's a housing shortage all over the country. It's national.
Well, that's what people say, but.
And prices are spack high.
There's a housing shortage because of all the, all these other people wanting to buy the houses but are not living in them. It's a second home. It's a short-term rental. It's, um, rental for year-round rental. And, you know, you just can't. Um, my point is, no wonder nobody can find a home to buy.
Some of it, some of it is nice little grandmas and grandpas from Two Rivers that are fortunate enough that they've got a retirement income that supports a house in Arizona or a condo in Florida all winter. And their, their impact on the community is the same.
And you got.
Except they're ours. They're not from away. They're ours.
You've got, you've got HUDF homes. They're just sitting idle and I don't know what the, and it's not just HUDF. It, it's the government is not allowing them to sell their.
When banks go through foreclosure, I know that we have a lot right now that they say.
I'd like to do the number, but I mean, we've got, they're sitting idle that we can't, with. You know, we can't change it out of, out of our ability.
We're not gonna sell those increases right here. It's a multi-gasps of people.
It's, it has many causes.
I think in a lot of ways, the free market will decide. I mean, right, how many renters can, I mean, can you sustain a hundred? I think Joe said we had forty-six last year. Um, if you double that, do you have that many renters coming in to make it worthwhile for somebody to do that? I, you know, I think at some point, scale tips and it's just not worth it for them, so the number could be.
Doug's got a Doug's got a really good point there. I mean, the marketplace is gonna dictate how many you're gonna have. Uh, it might be what, what, seventy, eighty, ninety? But it, you're not gonna have any more than what the market, marketplace will allow.
We don't wanna control, we all want to delta the whole lifetime of work and savings to get our mortgage paid off. We don't wanna control that to get the higher bidder. Uh, there's a delicate situation. Reality is prices all over the country are going up. It's not, that's, you know, the short-term rental may be part of the inflation, but they're not the only reason. Of course, bank mortgages and cost of material, a lot of things are gonna happen. It's very sensitive.
But if we gain control of how many are in each neighborhood, it's not so much of a market thing as much as it is helping out our.
Who don't want it and are competed by a bunch of noise and light. I think we're taking some very good steps, positive, to make our community a great place to live, or change everything all at once.
I guess I'll ask. I mean, I'm not against the short-term rentals by any means, but I think some, some sense of community, I, I don't know that, I mean, some people say that they got multiple on their block. I don't know how that means. Uh, I'm gonna be very honest. I don't think I'd like that. If there was one, I think I'd probably be okay. But i- if, if there ended up being six or seven, I think that creates a whole other nuisance when you're trying to reason with them.
Go ahead. If you go by the blocks, if you, go ahead.
And Wisconsin has, if you can put like, uh, like smoke times and different regulations on, but you can't tell them that you're using.
Six, um, over seven days you can't, under seven you can. So that, that's the one we have to regulate according to the sheet we have in front of us. I think it's thirty-two. Yeah, prohibits, uh, rentals of seven consecutive days or more. And not a hundred. That's what the attorney just, just.
Yeah, that's correct.
Go ahead. Okay, if we, if we have one per block, but that block is stretched over, we'll say, if you go two blocks, you can have one. That's, and you go with five houses on each side of the street, you can have twenty. So it's one out of twenty. You add another block, it's one out of thirty. So I think if we decide prob- I, I don't know where you would start, but if you, you know, I think we should go with a percentage. Right now, we're below two percent of what we already have. And, but if we spaced it out, you could only, maybe two of them would end up next to each other. Nothing.
Depends on what the, the other questions, do you agree, and follow up with the existing ones?
I would.
Which I, people have made investment decisions based on status quo.
That's why I said we're respectful. We're not respecting. We don't wanna go back and tell these people after they've done everything that, hey, you're gone. I think it's going forward.
Then, then we.
So you don't get us your renewal. We're currently below one percent of our housing standard. If the numbers Joe has is correct.
I wanna say we've got over five thousand housing just sold.
Yeah, so they read like fifty-four.
Yeah, that sounds about right, actually.
So read like twenty, eighty-five percent. If they already knew.
And some people in those blocks really appreciate the homes the way they've been repaired and they look now compared to what they previously did.
Yeah.
So, you know, the negativity on, on short-term rentals are not universal. There, there's two sides to the story.
And obviously, if you look at a map, our biggest concentration is on the east side near the beach, between the East Wind River and the beach. I don't know how, and that, I can't speak for that neighborhood. I don't know that one of the emails you got was from that neighborhood. I don't know that we get any complaints from that neighborhood. There's, this isn't very scientific, but there's a different vibe over there than there's a beach neighborhood than, you know. I'm on my L.B. Clark school. I love my neighborhood. I wouldn't take a vacation there. Wouldn't go out. I wouldn't go out of my way to rent, rent a house in a purely residential neighborhood with no
No amenity.
No attraction or amenity, visitor amenity nearby.
So I mean, probably I don't get a lot of complaints in that neighborhood. They're used to the beach traffic and they're used to that.
Yes.
Someone may not like it, but I would assume you're kinda used to that. You have a park, you got a beach.
Yeah.
You got concerts and events that all happen there.
And a lot of people that have come to own properties there because they, they, they visited here.
Yep.
And purchased, so I just throw, throw that out there. An overall aggregate limit would be something at or higher than where we are now would be a start.
Well, aren't you limited to twelve percent, uh, homes? Craig?
Not that I'm over it. The only twelve percent that rings a bell to me is the limit on new TIPS, this percent of valuation.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right. TIPS, that's right.
That's the only place twelve percent comes to mind.
I, I don't think we'd ever get to a hundred. I don't think people, we don't have a need for that.
People might speculate you get to a hundred or higher, it would assuage that concern.
Plus, there's no houses available now, so you're not, you're not gonna get to a hundred real easy.
If there's not a need for a hundred, then she kept it on her phone.
Yeah.
I'm not saying to do that.
There might be folks that are concerned it's headed for five hundred.
There, people out there that do think that. I don't know, I'm not.
Well, and frankly, and I'm, I'm not being snotty about it, I hear about it on Facebook, but, you know, you, you really don't have any control over seasonal residency, people that purchase summer. There are ways we can structure fees, so maybe they carry a more, a bigger share of the burden. You know, there's been that discussion with utilities, I think our last two sewer rate increases at least have reflected that philosophy. I'd remind anyone here that's listening that if it's water or electric rates, or if the Public Service Commission approves our rates, they may not have the same policy agenda when they look at rates that we might. We've seen that before. So anyway, is there, I'll, maybe I'll regret this, but would there be an interest in establishing a new miracle cap citywide on the number of less than seven-day STRs?
Because those are the ones we can control, right? Anything over seven.
And it doesn't necessarily even have to be a cap, it could be jurisdictional as far as.
Proximity, that's.
I'd be okay with that.
Some manner of cap. Let's see, let's see, one, two.
I would have to see it, three.
Yeah, like, I'm thinking of a more common.
Yeah.
Or you can come back with some.
What someone does.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think if you somewhere.
If they do.
Okay. Um, yep, we just don't wanna come back with ideas based on too many. Not goodness gracious. How about you guys on the phone, is there any, any thought that, uh, setting some manner of citywide cap on the, I'm gonna call them really short-term rentals, our STRs, uh, under seven days? Interested in looking at that, not looking for a blood pledge that you vote for it, but do you want us to spend good staff time on looking at something like that?
I, I don't think you should have a cap on it, uh, it should be open market, you know, I don't believe in caps.
That's, that's a fair opinion. Mark, do you have an opinion you wanna share at this point? You don't have to.
I, I would, no, I would say I agree in open market too, let the owners be, and that's why I thought maybe a control could be under issuing the license for less than seven days that we can control through planning and have public communities within our city, because I don't know if we want a number cap only in the city. I think it, it's, it related to more of a neighborhood cap, and what the neighbors who own homes live there all year round to feel about this. But I don't know if we can legally do that or not.
So, what are you saying, the neighborhood would vote on what the neighborhood cap is, or?
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm saying that I don't like cap ideas. I'm saying, could we control less than seven days by having the planning commission involved in letting them commit the less than seven-day license? Or approve that process and have public input? Have the community and residents of that neighborhood say, we don't want, we have too many now in this street, we don't want more. Can we solve the problem that way? But for us arbitrarily establish a number, I don't think that's fair.
I, as a member of the plant commission, I, I'm sorry, I'm, from what I'm hearing, I don't like you shipping everybody to us to hold a neighborhood meeting and to count, and count hands.
Oh, it'd be the conflict, because we voted on the full plan creation.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like we're looking for a, 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 an input bit similar to like, a conditional use where we're talking about informing, basically like, informing the neighbors and giving them the opportunity to speak on the license, I have an idea?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying for less than seven days. Uh, because I don't think most of the neighbors would complain if they're gonna see how improved and purchased and turned into a short-term rental, with the new restrictions we're putting on, some of the concerns. I think we're taking some positive steps forward. I hate to cap the number.
You know.
Well, oh.
Okay, here's the thing, it's that, number one, I don't see why we need to go to the neighborhood. It seems like we're starting to go, and it's a good thing, go to the public and their opinion, but on some things, it's like, you know, they voted for us to be in this position to make some decisions. So if we have rules, you can only have, you know, uh, one in this block or, or what have you, but I know you're talking down on the east side. But if you have people voting or, you know, saying, okay, well, you know, Bob wants to put up a B and B and nobody likes Bob, they're not gonna approve it. You know, they're just, it's gonna be prejudicial, I don't think that that's, I, I think that is, give them some guidelines, you give them parameters and very clear ones. They, they either respect them, the, the property owner, um, who's in control of the, of the renter. But, we, we shouldn't police everything, we can't. A, a lot of this is, is driven by the homeowner. They gotta keep their renters under control. So, and then we go back to the, that citation thing and all that. What are we gonna do? Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think the improvements we're picking are gonna stop a lot of the problems or concerns, but I don't think there's that many problems out there, I've not heard anybody complaining about, thank the learned, just like few. But I can appreciate their concerns or maybe their complaints, and I, I think we're taking steps to address theirs. Concerns, I don't like the cap idea either, I think the market should take care of itself. But if we wanna go to that, let's get the engagement of immediate people in the community, that's my thought.
Andrew can maybe next speak to, we, we did have a question about, right, right now, if, if you accept that this is a, this is a use, it's a residential use of the property. You may have to just redefine what a family is, but it's a residential use. Do we, do we mention it in the code as a permitted use, or is it a conditional use? Prospectively, where in the future, anybody wanting a vacation, a short-term rental license needs to get a conditional use permit first. That does assure notice goes to everybody within two hundred feet of the property. They have the opportunity to come to a public hearing and speak to it. And the council could set some additional conditions specific to the site beyond what's in licensing. We don't have the latitude there we used to, because there's been some changes in state law on CUs, conditional uses. That does mean that if, if you did that, every new CU or every new license application for a short-term rental would come in front of the council for a full-blown public hearing. I don't know if you wanna raise the public's expectations that much that they're likely to be denied. There could be a middle step there, which is, they're a permitted use, but part of the license, have to be built into the fee is when a license is issued, because right now you could be sitting there not in all the property next door, you just got a license. Until you start noticing different people every weekend. There could be a requirement to at least do a mailing to everybody within two hundred feet, say, by the way, the city's recently licensed a vacation rental in the neighborhood. FYI, here are the rules that apply. And these are, you know, the owner is supposed to abide by these, the guests have to be informed of them. We think it's important that you as a neighbor know this.
I need to do some clarification work, when I said, um, about, about, um, residence input, I was referring to the whole process.
Correct.
Not, you know, I, we've done that before, if you're going to, I, I can't remember the exact issue. But you, something's happening, happening at this address or this block, and you notify everybody who's in. That was a problem that we had on one of our, on one of our, uh, you know, I think it was, we, we did a street, was it Twenty-Fourth where, where we didn't get there and put on?
Well, that, yeah, that was a.
You know what I mean?
That was, that was a communications blunder, yeah. We.
But no, just that.
But we do, on, if you're rezoning a property, or if they're applying for a conditional use permit, or a variance from the zoning board of appeals, notice goes out to all property owners within two hundred feet. In that case, often a hearing, all I'm suggesting, if you didn't make it a conditional use, which could, where a hearing is required, you could still use that same standard to inform the neighborhood the license has been issued. Just a, just a thought. Andrew does have experience.
Is that legal? Andrew, is that legal? You do that?
Yep, yep, that is one, uh,
That's not my responsibility.
I want a few of the municipalities to. What happened with that area?
And Andrew does have one other client municipality that actually requires a zoning conditional use permit. Most don't, I would dare say most don't.
Yeah, this is a, this is a more, certainly a more restrictive way of handling this, uh, in, in some senses, uh, but a- at the same time, the conditional use is gonna run with the property. Um, it does allow for certain, um, you know, the, the punishment can be a little bit, could, could potentially be a little bit harsher. Um, i- if, you know, part of those conditions include, um, you know, keeping up to the, the STR standards that you wanna set. And, and it, it certainly would make sure that the people who want to rent out their properties are very serious about it. Um, willing to, you know, attend the hearing and, and prepare for it and, um, go through the, the additional application hoops of the conditional use permit above and beyond the license. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't replace the license requirement, the license would still be there on top of it and, and need to be applied for every year. It would just be allowed, it, it would just then, uh, be allowed as a use of the property as long as the conditions were met.
It'd be a prerequisite for getting a license, at least a new license.
Right.
Any appetite for that concept?
That sounds like a lot to go.
And a hurdle for any homes that wanna move in that direction, right? Their children, and they're, and they're in compliance.
Yeah, then you'd have, if you were interested, then there'd be a whole decision about do you grant father the existing licensed properties or require them to comply, but.
I think we'd have the grandfather, because you can't make rules without grandfather, but I, that, that to me would be more logical. It's not a cap, it's just how serious we are about adhering to the policies.
Would mean that every new short-term rental application, however you define that, if it's seven, if fewer than seven, I would recommend that.
Yeah, fewer than seven.
Would have to end up in front of the council for a public hearing.
Yes.
But, and, but then, to what extent does the council distinguish one application versus another, and what are your criteria?
We sit back and watch the community respond, if there's an extreme negative in the community, that's one direction we move. If there is no resentment in the community, and they're, they're being compliant with the rule, we can move in the other direction. But then we're getting some involvement without arbitrarily saying we have fifty-seven units, period.
I wanna point at you.
I, I hear we can just say, sir, any support? I'm not seeing any hands going up.
I can't see anybody right there either.
If, that sounds, that sounds enough like a neighborhood referendum.
I mean, yeah, we wanna put some regulations and stuff behind it, but we don't wanna make it impossible for someone to do this.
I'm not sure it satisfies anybody's concerns, but what about the idea of at least notifying neighbors when a license is issued for property? Maybe that doesn't serve any good purpose, I don't know.
I think it'd serve a good purpose, but is that something the city should be responsible for, or is that something the person that owns the property should do?
I haven't given that a lot of thought, my quick thought is, I think it'd be simpler rather than the city trying to police that, for the city to do it, or charge to do it. If you think it's important to do it.
Like they go for a conditional use.
Yeah, except a conditional use permit that's notification upfront.
You gotta pay for notification.
Oh, right, in that regard, yeah, build it into the cost. And it could just mean upping the fee, or it could be it's, you know, five bucks per notice, because depending where the property is. Yep, you know, different number of people will be notified. Any other aspects that we had that were addressed in your letter, Andrew?
Uh, so, conditional use, it sounds like conditional use permits not particularly supported.
I didn't know browsing somewhere around the room for that one.
Yeah. Uh, next one would be adding a time limit for reapplication, so currently, there's no, uh, no limit on when somebody can reapply. Um, they could apply for a short-term rental permit, be denied, and then instead of appealing that decision, they can just immediately reapply. It's something of a, a workaround for, uh, for people if, if they just really want that permit right now. Um, and I would recommend, well, I shouldn't say most, a lot of places, uh, do impose a limitation on reapplication after a denial, so that the appeals process is required. Um, and usually that's, uh, around a year. I'm just wondering about the appetite for that kind of change.
So this could just as easily be reapplication after a denial or, or a revocation?
I could, I could see it in the case of a revocation, but if, if the initial application has been deemed insufficient in some way, they should get a chance to correct it or. Consultants get that all the time in the, in the world.
Yeah. I think we do see cases with, uh, membership operator license, wait a minute, this doesn't look complete.
Sure.
I guess it would depend if, if the non-renewal was because the council said, we are choosing not to renew because of violations, like you talked about earlier. Which I guess would be about the only reason for a revocation. So, to reapply after revocation or non-renewal because of ordinance violations associated with the property, then what's fair?
Or improvements that need to be made and are spent and are made, I think we should consider that immediately.
Sure, so I will, I'll, I'll look at, perhaps just, I just so for it, just for like non-renewals or, or revocation type actions. Suspension, uh, or bonds, um, while challenges are pending. So this would kind of be related to the citation, and, and I, I would just think could go either way, but, allowing suspension of an STR, adding something to allow suspension of an STR license, or, uh, allowing an STR license to, to continue to run while, uh, while actions are pending, is kind of tied into that limit that, uh, we, the, the limit that we talked about earlier, leading to the calls or, or, you know, other citations or, or warnings or whatever. Allowing them to keep running or, or allowing them to, uh, or rather allowing the, the council to suspend, uh, while things are pending. But I think with that other change, maybe I'll just write that in, uh, and we can decide on it, we can get the language in front of you. Long the cup, it sounds like, so i- if we're not that interested in, in adding the cup requirements, we can skip this, the next one. Um, and then the final one, I think the, the council was particularly interested in regular room tax reporting by property. So, uh, a- as I said before, uh, city can't really require marketplace providers, uh, or I should say likely can't require marketplace providers to report income for individual properties.
And let's, Andrew, is it incorrect? We submitted it in state, maybe surprised what the results are.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could certainly ask, there's, there's nothing against that. Okay.
Well, Greg, you wanna fill Adam in on that?
Oh, he's, he's aware of that, I mean, that, that is one remedy, the, you know, legislative remedy. I think, you know, Andrew's report here is simply saying, under the current law, what are the options?
Right, right. I'm saying if that changes.
Yeah, I know that.
True. I mean, yeah, if that changes, great, but right now, uh, Two Rivers is already requiring all STR licensees to maintain a book of business, to ma- maintain the names, uh, and the information of people who have stayed, the length of their stay and the amounts, uh, that, that they paid. And because the city's already requiring that as part of the license, the, the city could just require owners to provide that, you know, monthly, quarterly, annually, whatever, so that it can be compared to the lump sum that the city's getting from, from the marketplace providers.
Basically require disclosure of what they get from the marketplace provider. We, we've talked about this at a staff level. The big question is, and I realize we're really going on good faith on these. We don't go out and audit people's records. We don't, we don't have the staff resources to do that. So, do we want to, I'll just ask a question. Do you want to push this additional disclosure requirement onto, onto the owners' operators of STRs? Or at this point, leave the effort to trying to, trying to get a change in legislation?
Does the operator get a corporate thing from here?
My understanding, based on what we saw in the recent case of the refund, they, they do, or they certainly can.
So would it be unreasonable to ask if they get a copy of it?
Show your knowledge of how that works.
Oh, we do ask. Like we, you can have this as Andrew just said, some turn it in, some don't turn it in. So it's created a kid, then it becomes a situation of doing it with enough staff capacity to be able to follow along for those that are turning that information in.
What kind of benefit would we get out of doing it? I mean, would Explore Two Rivers get some sort of data out of that or?
It allows for a clearer, a, a, a very clear check against the amount of room tax the city actually receives. So if you, if you have individual data from people saying, I rented this many times at this rate. And you compare that to the lump sum that you get from, um, from the, the marketplace providers.
Right.
You can compare those totals and, and figure out whether, you know, you're actually getting what you're expecting.
Okay, and that's, we're already working on that then. Okay, I, I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Adam, is there anything else that? How would the timing of those two requirements work out? We timed it monthly or quarterly? Are the online people delivering at the same time to us? Does the city have payment? Yeah, I would reconcile the two.
I don't think we require anything, do we? Right now, the, the room tax reports from individual properties are supposed to come in monthly. The payments the city gets from the online providers, the marketplace are quarterly. That's what the state law provides for.
That answers my question.
Good.
How would?
Now, how, how do we sit, how do we, where do we find the staff time to sit down and reconcile the two? Check one against the other is an open question.
Yeah, maybe something that requires implementation of a new system in, in terms of, you know, requiring entry online by the, by the owner or something like that. Yeah. Right. Database.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering if an operator's license is revoked or let's just say they don't even apply for a license. If they're operating an STR or an RSTR without a license, what's the penalty?
Right now, this refers to the general penalty section of the ordinance. You wanted to clean up the penalty provision, Andrew, but right now, somebody could be cited into municipal court for operating in violation of this ordinance, I think, or the room tax ordinance, couldn't it? Failure to collect or maybe the collective of a failure to remit to the city.
Yeah.
Well, that's the other.
It'd be tax, it'd be taxation too, because they're collecting tax and they're not turning in.
That's the thing though. If they're, if they're renting through an online provider, they are being charged with tax and everything else.
It's more, are there any folks up there operating under the radar that are doing it on cash? And I don't doubt that may happen in some places with repeat customers, maybe. I mean, I've heard people say, well, the owner lives down the block and he said, next, next time call me directly. We'll take care of this. So I think I know what that might mean.
Well, no, but that also might be the cut.
And also avoiding the cut to the,
Because Airbnb takes a cut.
Yep.
So, there are defined penalties though.
Yeah, help me out there, Andrew. If somebody is violating.
You're clear, right. It'd be section 115, uh, the, the general, it, it points to the general penalty section, so you, you'd have to, I think you've got to define what that penalty is going to be more specifically. Because right now, you just say between five and $1,500 for, for the penalty here. So I, I, I mean.
So we should be more specific, but where we stand right now wouldn't preclude the municipal court judge from entering a, a penalty for a conviction, right?
Yep, yeah, yeah, as long as the, the, whatever citation is written that, well, that is in that range, it should be a,
Yeah, but it, it's a little bit laughable if you're reading the ordinance and saying, oh geez, it could be from, what was that, five, five to a thousand?
Five to a thousand, yeah.
Okay. Well, I did hear support for at least the council wanting to look at maximum number of occupants tied to number of beds, bedrooms, excuse me, plus four. Adding, uh, short-term rentals as a recognized use in the R district. I'm sorry, somehow addressing the definition of family in the zoning code as to what, what is family? If we're going to say something's a one-family. Some cleaner language on what the basis is for revoking or denying renewal of a license based on violations versus calls. Cleaning up the penalty section. Setting some standards for when, how quickly you can reapply following a council non-renewal or revocation of your license. There was discussion about some manner of cap, either absolute cap on the number of really short-term rentals citywide. I didn't hear a great deal of support for either a, a total number or a separation requirement. I, I heard some interest. I didn't, people were a little gun-shy about that one, I guess I would say. Do you want to see something back on a cap? On a cap?
On a cap, I, yeah, I thought it was something going off citywide.
Citywide?
Citywide block can be big.
We can identify some options.
Give some options.
Adam had also,
Lighting, lighting order by lighting.
Yeah, help me out on lighting. Is lighting, we, do we want to, I've heard council members over the last several months, this has been a topic, say we ought to, we ought to address an overall lighting ordinance for the city? Or should it be initially just, at this point, at least something that just targets vacation rentals?
I brought it up where I'm okay with it starting here. Uh, but, I mean, the city should get something probably to look at, but I would be okay with it starting here. I don't, I don't see a reason why someone's, has left their backyard like this one individual did. But no, no need there especially.
Like I mentioned, they use full cutoff lighting not to irritate the neighbors if they're, I know lighting.
I'd like to see it, you know, lighting, but restrictions for our whole city, um, conventionally, but to start, to have somewhere to start with. Maybe it is STRs for right now, and then going to the citywide.
There are, look up lighting in ordinances. There's light, you can't, you can't have light coming even from a parking lot. Your, your parking lot cannot put light onto a, a nearby residence or something. I mean, there, you know, all they want is a lamp on the light so it shines down on the ground. Not, not that it shines everywhere.
Are you saying we already have those on books or just what other cities?
Parking lots, they have full cutoff.
Yeah.
That means we're,
Yeah, we look at that when we do site planning.
Right, and that's what I was trying to get to when we have these, because they're not businesses, but yet they have businesses. But yet they don't have to file the lighting restrictions that everyone else has to go through when it comes to businesses.
Right.
But they're not a business.
Right.
But they operate as a business, but that's the kind of great area. I just want to take a whole lot away from residential, because like I said, there, there are some residents that are even tighter than mine because they, they're old school neighborhoods that you didn't, you didn't have the site yard setback. I mean, how much pollution do you really say, can't you go into your neighbor's yard when you're raped? But next, you're, pretty much unstoppable. You can go on Highway 310 and then there's a house that they're pretty much, I bet you could hardly walk through it. There is one on Hawthorne that, that is like that. I mean, how much spillage are you going to really get into? Not that there's probably something there, but how much is, how much?
Well, I guess we could come back. Are you considering lighting standards and you tell us who to apply to?
Yeah, I, I think what we're hearing is start with short-term rentals first. I have to say.
Yes, Tom. Do we, do we need to clarify in the R1 zoning code that the border, the part of it does not, I mean, that's for renting out a bedroom where, you know, Grandpa Joe's coming to work at Hamilton and he stays with another family. That doesn't really apply to short-term rentals.
Yeah, I think that, I'm, I'm being vague now, but I think that's the definitional thing that Andrew's going to have to sort through. I, I heard that as part of,
I mean, that, that could be our, our intent to clean that up a little too.
Yeah. On the lighting, I think it's because Paragon, this town's got more motion-activated floodlights. You walk, you can walk down the street and it's like going through the freezer section at festival flues. They, they click on. I'm assuming maybe under a lighting ordinance, we somehow exclude security lighting as a guarantee.
Yes, yes, I, I would not want to put security lighting on that scene. And you're going to get spilled with that and that is what it is. They don't say on, right, meant to be lighting on my home. They're meant to turn on when they see activity and turn it back on.
Unless you've got a spider web, in which case you're out in the middle of the night.
Well, we could, we could hold up a reason for that.
Yeah, okay, okay. I've taken that one fair enough. And Adam had a suggestion about specifically posting the noise or requiring that that be posted. There might be several things you want to pick out of this list.
That's true.
Be worthy of posting.
Yeah, I just wanted to address concerns about people who are always, although I think our advisor system is still restricted. One's got to follow, I guess we all got to. We've got to make sure that the people that are living here that are new.
That'll qualify in some direction. We'll, we'll bring something back if, hmm, I'm going to, in fairness, that might be the February work session. Because again, if it's a change in the licensure,
It's not something.
There, we're already into the current licensing cycle. Anything else anybody wishes to bring up? Thank the one member of the public that was here tonight. Just acknowledge we have one.
Close session again?
Please.
Okay. So, per Wisconsin statute, it's 1985-1G, conferred with legal, legal counsel for the governmental body who's rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to, likely to be complicated. So we have two things, discuss the matter related to, discuss matter related to cemetery lots and discuss recent communications from friend Vanderbry or related regarding city utility services. Looking for motion to go into call session. Thank you, Shannon. Second by, thank to Bonnie. Any council discussion? See none, this will be a roll call vote.
Bonnie Shubelus.
Hi.
Scott Steckness.
Hi.
Adam Husky. Darla Leclair. Mark Pitner.
Hi.
Shannon Derby.
Hi.
Bill Leclair.
Hi.
Doug Brand.
Hi.
Tim Petrie.
Hi.
Most curious. We will be going into close session. Does anyone need a few minutes break?